Welcome to City Hall, 790 Homestead Boulevard. We're going to now start our committee of the hall meeting here, January 8th, at 5:40 in the evening. Madam Clerk, call the hall, please.
Councilwoman Peerkos McMonack?
Here.
Councilman Martin Adam?
Here.
Councilman Shelley?
Here.
Councilwoman Wallman?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Burgess?
Here.
Mayor Beeman?
Here.
Before we get into the first item of business, because I don't want to forget this, John Burgess and I, Vice Mayor and I, we're going to sing "Happy Birthday" to Patty and to Elizabeth. Because yesterday was Patty's birthday and tomorrow's Elizabeth's birthday. So you ready, John? (singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Patty. Happy birthday to you. You're more than welcome. Thank you, guys.
No, I agree.
Okay, first item, additions, deletions, referrals. None? There are none? Seeing none, okay. Request to update, what we were going to do, Councilman Shelley asked to move up, you want to move it up now in front?
You need to go to Burgess' side.
Okay. We're going to move up the request for books, Bronx literacy program, and what's the other item, Mr. Shelley?
Tab 12.
Okay, we'll move tab 12 to tab 1 and work on these two. So, staff report on the first item.
Mayor, the Homestead Rodeo Association is requesting that the mayor and council authorize the city manager to help the book and Broncos literacy program by donating funds to go towards purchases of requested reading books and/or bus services for 500 first graders to take a field trip to the Homestead rodeo grounds on January 24th, 2013, to continue their skills concerning horses. Cost of the books is $3,301.41 and bus service is $1,280. Staff is requesting direction from mayor and council.
Okay, discussion from council.
Well, if I could, Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Is this the first year we've been requested to pay for this? I don't remember this.
Vice Mayor Burgess, the rodeo association is here to answer any questions, but it is their first time asking for this.
I mean, I know I've been to the event, but I could never recall. I went back and tried to think about the request. I never. It's a great event. I've been out there, I guess, two years. The kids love it. Majority are Mar from within the city of Homestead and stuff, so if you guys haven't been out there, it's a great event that the kids love. And I can support it. If the funds can be found, I would love to support it, and it looks like we can find them. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Wall.
As always, I've always supported you guys. Always, always, always. And I'm going to support you again this year. Only thing I ask is that maybe next year, there's only one school in the city limits of Homestead, and that's Redondo. So, next year, I would really like to see all the schools in the city limits of the city of Homestead, since we are the ones that's going to... If you ask us to fund it again next year, I don't know.
Go ahead. Nick kind of handled this program for many years.
Just give us one address. One address for the record and then...
My name is Nick Coffin. Been a rodeo association member about 41 years. I'm now associate or member of mayor's, but about 12 years ago, we saw this program where they brought these horses to first graders, and each first grader gets to come up and touch the horse, and they get their own hardback copy at that time, Little Black Pony. They take them home, and sometimes that's the only book in these households. And also, sometimes it's the first time these kids ever saw a horse. And it's amazing, the stories we get back, that these kids even practiced to read, so they could read to the horse, because 30 days later, we bus them to the arena. When we first started, we got grant money, and that's what paid for it. We limited the number of schools only by money. We've got the horses that could come out to the schools, but purchasing the books and the buses has limited us to how many we could do. Some of the stories we've heard about these little, these kids that, one kid, our teacher told me, he never read out loud in school, but he read to the horse. And then, a month later, when we saw him again, he's leading a reading group. So, a lot of stories that come out of what this program does. Like I said, first saw it 12 years ago. I brought it in from Las Vegas, and we started it, and Wendy can add to that. Any questions?
No, I believe in the program. It's amazing. I mean, and you know, I come from a horse background, so...
Yes, ma'am.
But, I mean, I think it's amazing, and we use horses in therapy with our disabled children as well, so, you know, I'm a big advocate for that. And I support it completely this year. I'm just saying that if you're going to ask us to do it next year, because it is Homestead dollars, that we keep the schools within the city limits of Homestead.
Absolutely.
Okay? So, congratulations. It's always a success.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Peerkos. Yes, Shelley. Either way. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Go ahead. After you.
Okay. I just would like to echo the sentiments from my colleague, Councilwoman Wallman. In fact, we're going to continue to do this moving forward, to just ensure that the schools that we select are within the city of Homestead. And my next question is, how were these three schools selected?
Wendy can answer that.
That's a very good question. And one of the schools is my school, so I went ahead and allowed the school avocado to be part of it. We started with six schools?
Yeah, we've done as many as six.
Six schools. And we did have several of the schools in Homestead. We didn't have the funding. We had to ask the schools to fund, and everybody knows that now the schools can't really afford to do it themselves. So, the schools had to drop out. Basically, what we did was, two years ago, we asked the schools to pay for themselves, and we paid for their buses, and several of the schools paid for themselves. Now, they can't do it. So, basically, what happened was, we asked the schools that wanted to do it, that if they could pay for it, they would, and unfortunately, they weren't able to pay for it. And these are just three schools that we've done before, and it's basically what's...
I know Lloris C. Saunders participated in the past.
Yeah, they did. And I hate to bring up, but one of the principals at the school gave us a very, very hard time when we got there with the horses.
But I think it's a new leadership. There's a new leadership now.
That's something that we're looking at. We had decided that after this year, we were going to try and go ahead and add more schools, but of course, the funding is what we don't...
Right. And definitely add more schools that will really benefit and that truly can afford to pay, because I know kids down here that can probably pay to go to the event. And we have a critical population who really and truly probably...
And that was the, what the program was really about. It was the low-performing schools and also socio-economically-low schools, and that's what we had originally. But that's when we had the grant.
Right.
So, we were able to pay for everything for them. And then, the Black Stallion program said, "Well, you know, maybe you'll have to cut it down," because we couldn't afford to do it.
Well, you have a great program. I support it and continue to do it within the city of Homestead, but the laser-light focus on the population that really can benefit the most from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shelley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo my colleague's sentiments and just say what a great program it is. I've been out there a couple of years now and actually seen it firsthand, and it is amazing to see the children's face light up when they read to the horses and they see the horses. And I just think it's a good program, and it's a good, it's good that you do it, and especially here locally in the city of Homestead. I do also echo my colleague's sentiments that it would be good to have more Homestead schools involved in the future going forward, and I know funding is a limiting factor, but hopefully, we can continue to grow the program going forward as well. So, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Ditto, I agree. Kudos to all three of you, because you give a lot of your own time to make Homestead a better place to live for all of us. And I know, Nick, you don't even live in Homestead. You live way up north.
I drove an hour to get here.
You drove an hour to get here. I haven't known Nick since I was, what, nine or 10 years old.
Yeah, when you started learning how to catter.
Yeah. I don't know who, or how to ride, and Nick was one of my mentors. And just the things that you do for Homestead Rodeo, for years, you'd been driving from Fort Lauderdale, right, to here?
Yes.
Yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you. You've got my support.
Thank you.
Okay, direction? Yes, strong enough?
Both amounts.
Both amounts? Both amounts?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Don't go away. Item 12, right?
Yeah, item 12.
Okay, item 12. 12 is... A motion to place cars. Move it.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Staff?
The Homestead Rodeo Association is requesting that the mayor and council authorize the city manager to approve waiver of $5,000 bond, waive the other costs and fees described herein to the 64th Annual Homestead Rodeo on January 25th, 26th, and 27th, 2013.
Thank you. Questions or comments, council? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Yes, sir. Okay, back on the schedule here to... B, February 2nd, 2013, Homestead Centennial Celebration Event. Welcome.
Good evening. Did everybody receive their packets? In your package, I had sent out a copy of the budget, so you've all received that on Friday. What I'm passing out to you today is just really a breakdown of the Homestead Centennial Celebration scheduled for February the 2nd at Harris Field. My name's Yvonne Knowles. I'm the chair of the Centennial Steering Committee, and I'm here with members of my committee and volunteers and part of the centennial organization. So, we're a group of volunteers that have been together now for seven months, and we still like each other, we still meet every week, we still seem to be having a lot of fun, so it's a blessing. Thank you, Lord. Nothing bad has happened yet. The February 2nd event is going to be a major celebration, it's our big culmination event. As we all know, January 27th is the date of the centennial, 1913 to 2013, but because of our wonderful friends, the rodeo, we don't want to step on their toes, so we gave them the 27th, and we took the 2nd of February as the actual official centennial day. The pavilion will, we will be having an event at Harris Field, and the pavilion will be, the four zones of activity are broken into, the pavilion, the arcade, the kids' zone, and the arena. And with your indulgence, I'll just go real quickly over how we're going to break this area out. The event will begin at 2:00 p.m. on Saturday and end at 10:00 p.m. The pavilion will be dedicated to the historic portion of the festival with a presentation entitled "The Homestead Story." This will include theatrical and musical components and a static display of historic photographs from our town hall museum. The presentation of the play is "The Homestead Story." I've been told not to call it a play. Presentation of "The Homestead Story" is scheduled for 4:30 p.m. It'll go to 5:30 p.m. The arcade will be the connecting area between the pavilion and the arena, and there you will find a tent of sponsors, vendors, and games such as Speed Pitch and Duck Pond, as our community will have fun at this, pardon me, for acting as a bridge between the two areas of entertainment. The kids' zone will include, at this point, two bounce houses, a rock climbing wall, and an aviation-themed inflatable, which is going to be quite inspiring. This will ensure that children of our community will have fun at this historic event. The arena, starting at 3:00 p.m., will be the center of our major entertainment. The music will kick off with R&B contemporary Miami favorites, "I Can Vow," followed by South Florida's hottest classic and contemporary rock bands at 5:30, "Mr. Nice Guy." At 7 o'clock, we would like to invite the council and mayor to come to the stage and greet the community and also sing "Happy Birthday" and cut the centennial birthday cake. After that, we will have music continuing with Mr., excuse me, the Depp 52, and there will be an hour's pause from 4:30 to 5:30, when we have the centennial story, the Homestead Story, occurring at the pavilion, so we won't have a conflict of music while the play is going on at the pavilion. Then, our final act, starting at 9 o'clock, will be Mr. Eddie Gonzalez, who has a very large following and has been on radio and TV and has this tremendous Tihana band. And if you go on the YouTube, you'll see productions of Mr. Eddie Gonzalez. He's kind of a, would you say, Clint Black? Garth Brooks? But very popular for our community. We've already gotten some major feedback, people looking forward to this presentation. So, that's our scheduled events. The event ends at 10 o'clock, and we close up the event at 11 o'clock with everybody off the fields. Are there any questions? I have Mr. Larry Deal here, who can answer questions directly about the historic presentation. That's his venue, and Mr. Tony Sinatra, who is here from Sinatra Productions, who's organizing all of our musical venue. I have to say something real quickly. Mr. Sinatra and his partner Sid gave us, we were the beneficiaries of the... Fernstock. I was going to get that right. I kept going to say Woodstock. For Fernstock this year, they very graciously called us and said, "We would like to give the centennial committee $1,000 from Fernstock," which they did two months ago. It was amazing. Since then, we have absolutely overstated our welcome with them. We have used them for production design, we have used them for connections to all the entertainment world. Mr. Sinatra would like us to $1,000 back and go home, because we have abused the friendship, but he has been so wonderful and so supportive, and we're so lucky to have him. So, he, when you see the breakdown of that whole entertainment section, he went out there, found these acts, got them excited about the event, and it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful entertainment part of the centennial celebration. So, thank you, Mr. Sinatra, very, very much.
Thank you, sir.
That's my presentation. If you have any questions?
Questions, comments? Yes, Ms. Wall.
I have to, thank you, Mr. Sinatra. Thank you. Because I had questions, because I'm not up on a lot of this stuff, so I didn't recognize the names. Nope, that doesn't mean anything, because I wouldn't recognize the names anyway, but just so we know that we're having a variety of music, right?
By the way, did you all like the poster?
They're beautiful.
Thank you.
Who designed these flyers? Who designed these flyers, posters?
Committee, everybody did.
They're beautiful.
This is a poster designed by committee. I'm sure, we had a meeting Tuesday, Friday, Friday, and the artwork that was presented was totally trashed by the committee and redesigned on the table, so this is really the work of 10 people.
I'm going to frame it. I love it.
And then, I got back from taking my daughter to college and first saw it, figured I had to redesign it again. There was a few mistakes, but it was really, they'd done a great job. What we did is, we tried to approach the demographics of Homestead from an entertainment standpoint, and, you know, we tried to provide a musical entertainment that would at least be receptive to all the various communities. We have a rhythm and blues act, "I Can Vow," they're tremendous. They've toured Europe, they've been in, they play regularly at Tobacco Road. They've done, they've done a lot of shows. I've known them for years. I spent 10 years producing the summer concert series for Coral Gables Congregational Church, and I've worked extensively with that, "I Can Vow," and they're really, really a tremendous act. They're both, you know, represent the black and R&B community, and they do a lot of different types of music. The two contemporary rock bands are bands that have played everywhere from the Mutineer to John Martins and Coral Gables and everywhere in between. Mr. Nice Guy has been well-known for eight or 10 years. They've done a lot of events. Depp 52, I happen to be the drummer of that band.
I just want to make sure that it's not just all rap and hip-hop, I mean that...
There is no rapper hip-hop.
There are many generations.
Right. The point is, there is no rapper hip-hop. We discussed the possibility of that, and we...
Oh, hush, young and talented.
And we decided that the best way to address that segment is to go R&B, which is pretty much, encompasses more of a generational thing, which, you know, hip-hop and rap tend to be more skew younger, but, you know, our good R&B is, everybody loves good rhythm and blues, you know? That just is going back to Motown and onward, so that's the way we approached that. Of course, the two contemporary rock bands, they, you know, we do everything from Beatles to Stones to Steely Dan to Black Eyed Peas and onward, so that sort of covers that whole thing. And, you know, we know that, I've been producing in this town since 1969 and '70, and, you know, we know that, you know, there's a very dominant Latino contingency in Miami. Everybody thinks Cuban and salsa, but the truth of the matter is, I've been involved with the migrant camps here since '69, and there's, the demographic of the Hispanic community here at Homestead is more Mexican. And so, the decision was made to put in a Tejano act, which is their version, sort of like country, you know? It's sort of like the Hispanic world's country, because I know that they've attempted to put salsa bands down here at times, and it's not attended well, because that's not what the Mexican community really likes, you know? That's more of a Central American, South American, and the islands thing, so I started to research the Tejano acts, and I came across this guy, Eddie Gonzalez, and, you know, he really is an amazing act. He's had many hits in the Tejano music business. He's headlined their Grammy Awards, and so this guy is, actually, he has budgets way above. The other three acts are local, but, you know, well-known locally. He's the one act that has, you know, national, international appeal, and we just felt that, you know, that was the right thing to do for the community, and that's how we broke it down.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for indulging me. I just wanted to make sure we were covered.
Oh, yeah. That was a whole concept.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. I appreciate everything you've done for us. Any other questions?
Just a question. I know it's on the poster, there's fireworks. Are we actually having fireworks at the event?
No, that was taken off the agenda.
Okay.
No fireworks.
Because fireworks would be...
Birthday cake.
Fireworks would be nice for the centennial. Is there a possibility of adding those back in?
I think there was an issue with, is Mr. Matan here? Yeah, I think we had that discussion, and I don't think we were able to get clearance for it in the Harris Field to have fireworks.
I know we talked to the fire marshal, no, we could not do that, because of the trailer park and everything being so close.
There was a safety hazard.
Can we do it over the top of City Hall?
We might be able to do that.
How about sparklers on the birthday cake? Anything else?
No. More than satisfied. Thank you again, President.
Thank you for all your support, council. We really appreciate what you've been there behind us on all, everything we've been planning and so supportive of this committee, so we're very grateful to the mayor and council for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Also, Mayor, may I say one more thank you? We have an amazing support staff here, Kalia, Evelyn, and Begonia Casales, and all the people from FOP and from the police department and from Park and Rec. You know, it's been eight months of work, but it could have been a nightmare, and these people have made our work so much easier, and I just might do a big shout-out to everybody from the city of Homestead who helped us on this project. It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kudos. Okay, next item is approval of minutes.
Move it.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Okay, item carries. Tab 4, motion to place car 713 on council agenda, waiver of fees for the use of Harris Field Pavilion.
Move it.
Second. Thank you. Staff?
The Buffalo Football Booster Club is requesting that the mayor and council authorize the city manager to approve waiver of usage fees in the amount of $340 for the use of the Harris Field Pavilion on February 20, 2013, according to the Cities Code, Chapter 20, Section 20-11. Fees and charges, the city council sets fees and has the right to waive parts of recreation fees by majority vote. Buffalo Football Booster Club would like to recognize the South Bay Senior High Football Team for its achievements this year.
Okay, questions, comments from council? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Thank you. Tab 5, motion to place car 714 on council agenda, waiver of fees for the use of Homestead Community Center banquet hall.
Move it.
Thank you. Second. All right, staff?
State Representative Rashine is requesting that the mayor and council authorize the city manager to approve waiver of usage fees in the amount of $500 for the use of the Homestead Community Center banquet hall on January 10, 2013, to host a town hall meeting. The representative would like to host a town hall meeting at the Homestead Community Center to gather input from the residents of District 118 proposed bills for the 2013 legislation.
Mayor.
Yes?
No, I just want to say, in the five years I've been sitting here, and maybe before I got involved as heavy as I am, there were meetings, but this is the first one I remember, and I'd just like to say thank you to Representative Rashine for coming up here and listening to the people of Homestead and taking their opinions back with her at the Tallahassee, so thank you to her.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
I just would also like to recognize the fact that Representative Rashine is being proactive to have these town halls. I think it's a push from the state level, because I see a lot of state representatives moving towards this, and would like to acknowledge the fact that Representative Keone McGee is reaching out to us as well and having meetings and conducting town halls, so that he can be the voice of his constituents within District 118.
Excellent. Any further questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Wall.
Yes, I was just going to, as Councilman Patricia just mentioned, our State Representative McGee, he is, has anyone reached out to him maybe to do something like what we're doing here and having a town hall meeting as well? Patricia? Is that Sunday? Maybe we could...
I'm meeting with him Thursday.
Right.
But as a town hall meeting.
He's having a state of the district address. I don't have the date, but I believe it was sent to us. He's having a state of the district address, so I think that's his version of a town hall meeting to solicit feedback. Is that correct, Councilwoman?
That's right. Just want to make sure.
Thank you. I'll meet you Thursday. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Tab 6, motion to place car 697 on council agenda, RFP number 201235, debris removal monitoring.
Liz, it, Mayor.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Staff?
The Federal Emergency Management Administration recommends that municipalities establish emergency debris management contracts to be activated in the event of declared emergencies such as a hurricane. This contract includes, but is not limited to, monitoring field operations regarding all storm-generated debris, debris pickup, debris hauling, debris staging and reduction, temporary debris storage site management, debris management, and final disposal of debris to an approved facility. Also, the consultant is experienced in the Federal Highway Administration Emergency Relief Program, the Federal Emergency Management Agency Public Assistance Program, and other applicable federal, state, and our local programs to assist the city in its emergency response and recovery efforts. Consultant is required to properly document debris removal monitoring operations and ensure reimbursement to the city for the appropriate agency. Staff recommends the mayor and council approve, authorize city manager to award RFP number 201236 debris removal monitoring to the first-ranking and lowest bidder, O'Brien's Response Management. No guarantee on minimum or maximum amounts per items is made under this contract. No adjustment to bid prices will be considered due to increases or decreases in estimated quantities or fuel costs. quantities or fuel costs.
Questions or comments, Council? The only thing I heard that I called out the RFP to be two zero one two three five and you called it out to be two zero, Mr. Manager, two zero one two three six. So is there a typo there or something?
Uh, you know, my agenda information item says two zero one two three six and...
What's mine?
Mine says two three five, so I got...
Two three five also.
I got two three five. Well, whichever one it is, we'll correct it from...
Three six is right. Three six.
Three six is that.
Okay. Three six it is. Okay. Any final questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Motion to place car seven one one on council agenda, RFP two zero one two three one, debris removal services.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
All right, staff?
This is the one, this is a contract for the actual removal services, so it's on the same series. So the first one is somebody to document the removal and this one is the actual contract for the removal itself. Staff recommends that Mayor and Council authorize City Manager to award RFP two zero one two three one debris removal services to the lowest bidder, Omni Pinnacle. No guarantee on minimum or maximum amounts per items bid is made under this contract. No adjustment to bid prices will be considered due to increases or decreases in estimated quantities or fuel costs. And basically, this is there just in case we need them and we hope we won't.
Okay, questions or comments, Council? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Motion to place car seven oh two on council agenda, replacement of online and phone payment systems.
Move it.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Staff?
The city will utilize the new online and phone payment systems to provide customers with new or enhanced features. Some of the new features will include single instant payment without the need to register for an account, new mobile web application for customer service portal, upcoming text pay functionality, improved customer web portal that is compatible with all web browsers, redesigned electronic bill presentation and multi-language support. The new hosted application will also eliminate the need for yearly hardware and software maintenance costs. Agreement shall have an initial forty-eight month term and will be renewed on a yearly basis thereafter unless terminated by the city. The expected cost for the hosted solution with a thirty percent customer adoption rate will be two hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty dollars per year. It's approximately one dollar and ninety-three cents per transaction. Staff recommends that Mayor and Council approve the attached resolution and authorize City Manager to execute the agreement with Teleworks Incorporated for the replacement of current online and phone-based payment systems for the customer service department. This contract is exempt from competitive bidding in accordance with City Code, Section two dash four one one point one A seven, exemption from competitive bidding as a sole source.
Questions or comments? Question, these funds are coming from, we're passing this on? Is that how it's CDN paid for?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No, usually all these costs are absorbed by a city. I know we've discussed this in the past. It's basically a decision that you as the elected body make. Some cities decide to charge a transaction fee. We do not charge any of our customers to pay right now. So whether you pay at Western Union, online, over the phone, we don't charge any transactions. So that's where those costs come in.
Would that any takers on that theory? We're happy to pursue that. We have discussed that internally and it has become customary for online transactions to be, the transaction fee be charged to the customer, but that's really...
Well, I think it's, I asked the question, it's our fiduciary responsibility to at least cover the two hundred and eight, was it?
Yep. It's two hundred and...
Two oh eight.
Two oh eight, two hundred and eight cost. It's not budgeted for, I mean...
If it's the will of the Council, we have to come back with a proposal.
At least cover the cost of it. Yes, Mr.?
Mayor? Can you tell me approximately how many calls go through that, just so I can, we can, I can kind of think of a number that I might like to see?
Yeah, basically, the way that it's structured is that cost that we're talking about, first of all, it is budgeted. Customer Service does budget for that every year. And that's the cost that Visa, MasterCard, Amex, those companies charge us for. So there's a percentage rate. The percentage rate that they charge utilities is usually cheaper. So if you have a retail store, they're going to charge you between one point five to two percent per transaction. We pay a little bit less than that because it's all based on, you know, whether the customers' credit cards are going to go through, et cetera. Over the phone web payments, Vice Mayor, we usually get probably, on a good month, we get probably about four to five thousand a month. Our website is a little bit higher than that, maybe about another six thousand. Then the rest of the customer payments we received are through the mail. There's also a cost associated to that, that again, we absorb as a city. So if you really start looking at all the transactional costs for actually us to be able to process a payment, you know, they start adding up rather quickly. Western Union also charges between sixty cents to a dollar per transaction. So whenever you go to a Western Union and you pay, there's costs that we absorb there. So again, we have discussed this in talking to other member cities in the state. Our cities are charged up to five dollars for every time you pay your bill. You know, those costs continue going up as Visa and Amex start charging you more and more and more. It's a percentage. I know to pay your driver's license, there's a charge. If you're going to renew your tag, there's a charge. FIU charges you when you pay your tuition with a credit card. So, but that's basically a decision that's up to you.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Sure.
I would just like to say, I think this is going to be good. I don't know if any of you have ever tried to pay online with the current system we have now, but it's a struggle. And one of the things that I asked Richard about a long time ago was how do we improve that, you know? And I know that he and Jerry went up to Orlando and went to a convention there or a conference and found what they thought was the best solution to our problem. So I want to say thank you to them. And if you haven't tried it, I would recommend you go try it, just so you understand where we're going to with the new system. Because it's a tiring and very aggravating way that our poor customers are stuck to pay online now. It takes approximately, I would say, a good seven to nine minutes to get it done. And I can't remember the exact minutes that you told me about, you know, I think three to four minutes or something like that. If somebody moves quickly through it, the customer will be done now. But, so I want to say thank you for you guys on that.
Mr. Williams?
I, don't worry about it, Mayor. I reserve my question.
Yes, Ms. Ballman.
I'm all for charging. I'm sorry, you know, I think we should. I know FPNL, don't they charge? They don't even do that anymore? Okay, so see, there you go. I mean, we're providing a wonderful service and I can't see us paying for somebody not wanting to buy a stamp and put it in the mail or whatever, so, or go to Western Union. So for me, I just want to put it on the record that I think we should charge that fee. We should recoup that fee into our system. And the manager said something about bringing back something, so Mayor, if it's agreeable with you and the colleagues that I serve with, I think we should look into it.
Okay, let's hear the support. Do we have four members have support of that?
I didn't hear, I didn't hear what the request was.
Okay.
I, you're asking me what I said? I'm sorry. I just said that the manager had said that if we're, if we want that, that he'd be happy
to bring back something. Manager, I just...
We can come back to you with a proposal for, we'll have some research of who charges and who doesn't and what a recommended fee would be. But we didn't really want to go through that exercise if there wasn't support for that because during the budget process, there was kind of a consensus for no fee increases at the time, so we've kind of held that at bay. But some of the usage charges we see as, you know, if it's comparable to what other services do, it seems like a reasonable way to bring in some more revenue, but that is a policy decision, so it's really your choice.
May I say something to you, Mr. Shelley, to answer your question? Mr. Mayor, may I?
Sure.
To me, I don't see it as fee increase. I just see it as a use, you know?
A usage.
A usage. So, thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Shelley.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing the numbers. I mean, I think you can put together analysis. I don't know that I support it, but I think I at least want to see what the options are. The only concern that I have is that we're charging, we eliminated our customer service, our pay in-person windows. And then now that we are encouraging them to use other methodologies, now we're going to potentially charge those residents to do that. So it's the only concern that I have because we're kind of forcing them into this system and now we're going to turn around and charge them on the backside. So, but I would like to see, I wouldn't mind seeing the analysis and then I can make a decision at that point.
Sure. Okay, that's the general consensus. Yes.
If we break this down, it's over a four-year period, I believe it's two hundred and eight thousand dollars, is that correct?
It's two oh eight a year.
Two oh eight?
Per year.
Okay, I misunderstood. Okay. Thank you.
That's a tough thing. Okay, so the general consensus is that we let the manager and his team bring back some numbers?
Sure.
Okay. So we're going to table this.
Well, this item, we ask for you to move forward to the consent agenda, but we'll be thrilled to bring back a suggestion or some data on the issue of whether we charge or not for the service.
So you'll bring it back at Council?
Not at this Council meeting somewhere down the line, but we'd like to get this vendor up and running as quickly as possible.
Okay. All right, then, we're going to vote it as it stands now. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, item carries. All right, tab nine, motion to place car four five eight on the council agenda, purchase of Green Machine six three six H S air sweeper. Thank you. Second. Thank you. Staff?
Mayor, as part of the city's beautification initiative, the Green Machine six three six H S air sweeper is used for multiple purposes such as street tweaking, cleaning of sidewalks, parking lots, et cetera. This new equipment will reduce the time crews take to clean the city's infrastructure and provide an increased efficiency of city services. In order to ensure that local vendors had an opportunity to participate in this purchase, procurement issued a request for information of all local vendors with no responses received, staff's recommendation that the Mayor and Council approve the attached resolution authorizing the City Manager to purchase one Green Machine six three six H S air sweeper. The City of Homestead will be utilizing the Miami Dade County Contract Number nine five one three V X zero one two forklifts, Skid Sphere Inc., at the same price, term conditions, for total purchase price, ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Okay, questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Shelley?
Just a question for tab nine and on through. I know some of them said they were budgeted, not budgeted for, but my understanding is all these were CIP items, they all been budgeted, correct? These aren't? Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record. Thank you.
And this particular piece of equipment, the research we did on it, just doesn't exist in Homestead? Or for City or Homestead?
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, we sent out a request for information from the local vendors and none of them responded that they could provide us this equipment. We've been doing that for all solicitations for lawnmower equipment and vehicles.
Thank you. Okay. Any final comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. So ten eleven, just scratched.
Twelve we did.
Twelve we did. Thirteen, motion to place car six eight four on council agenda, purchase of utility...
Move it.
Okay, Digger. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Staff?
Mayor, this purchase will replace a nineteen ninety-six Ford Digger Derek that is not operational. The vehicle is utilized in the day-to-day operations of maintaining and restoring Homestead Energy Services, electrical facilities and assets, poles, conductors and equipment. Fleet has already condemned the Derek Digger unit that is to be replaced and recommend the replacement of this vehicle based on age, mileage and the maintenance cost threshold. Staff recommends that Mayor and Council approve the attached resolution authorizing the City Manager to approach, purchase the vehicle for the use of the electric utility. Total purchase cost, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Tab fourteen, motion to place car seven oh six on council agenda, purchase of utility bucket truck. Thank you. Second, thank you. Staff?
This purchase is to replace the two thousand Altech Utility Bucket Truck, number zero zero six one zero, the average life cycle of the bucket truck, utilized for maintaining electrical facilities and performing work on energized electric conductor. It's seven years, age and maintenance costs for safety and job functionality may be necessary to retire this vehicle from electric utility service. This vehicle may be utilized for other non-electrical city work. The electric utility is piggybacking on a National Joint Power Alliance Agreement. It's a service cooperative based in Minnesota which establishes and provides nationally-leveraged and competitively-solicited purchasing contracts. Through this process, Altech Industries has awarded the contract. It's also supported, widely used by government agencies throughout the United States. Staff recommends that Mayor and Council approve the attached resolution authorizing City Manager to purchase one Altech AA six zero bucket truck to be used by the electric utility. This purchase also includes the installation of the required additional equipment for this vehicle. Total purchase cost is one hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Questions from Council?
Mayor?
Yes, Ms.?
It's not a question. I just want to say, I am so glad we're upgrading our equipment. I mean, this is such a process that we, to my eyes, we should have done a long time ago, but we just couldn't. And I'm just happy. I'm happy that we're going to be safer and more efficient and I know the people out there who work these trucks and work these lines, they are too. So, thank you and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Item carries. Hey, motion to place car seven oh nine on council agenda, sale of surplus.
Mayor, in the year two thousand, the electric utility purchased a crankshaft for unit number eighteen through the sealed bid process for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This crankshaft was to be installed in conjunction with an upgrade to the engine, but due to a subsequent catastrophic failure of that unit, the crankshaft was never used and has been in storage since that time. The electric utility was approached by Powerhouse Diesel Services with an offer to purchase a crankshaft for use at another facility, as there were only a handful of these engines built. This is most likely the only opportunity that the utility will ever have to sell this surplus equipment. The only other value the crankshaft brings to the utility is that it could be used in unit number nineteen if ever needed. The chance of that is being needed is low. The offered price is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the same as the original purchase price. Staff's recommendation, Mayor and Council adopt the attached resolution and authorize City Manager to execute the sale of the surplus crankshaft to Powerhouse Diesel Services Inc. for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And I say congratulations to the utility for finding a buyer for something that's considered.
Amen. I don't want to dare ask what that crankshaft cost if you're selling it for three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Same thing.
Really? Same price? Awesome, that is...
No, it cost three twenty-five and we're getting it sold for three twenty-five.
I want to take you with me to buy one. Yes.
When I was reading this, I was thinking about that, what is it, the Rhodes Antique Show? You know, when somebody comes in and finds, what is it, Richard? The Road Show. You know, I mean, I thought it was phenomenal. I think it's great.
Great. All right, any final questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries. Very good. Excellent. Okay, discussion items.
Excuse me? Here's the real business now.
Okay. Discussion items, location for future chamber meetings. Staff report?
Mayor, you'd ask us to come back to it somewhat inventory of potential locations for both council meetings and other meetings that are held in chambers. So we put together a list for you. I think it's important to recognize that in these chambers, in addition to council meetings and cows, we have Community Development Agency that meets here, Planning and Zoning, historic preservation board, development review committee, Mayor's Youth Council, Mayor's Community Police Agency, Tourism Committee, Community Relations Board, Southwest Advisory Committee, CRA Not-for-Profit Committee, bid opening with a special master. We look at both public sites and then also private sites. Staff is recommending either the Community Center or the Fika Williams, actually Bill Dixon Community Center or Fika Williams Community Center. Both of those sites have, obviously, are capable of having, accommodating the attendance Both of those sites have, obviously, are capable of having, accommodating the attendance and the parking. One site has fiber, the other site is expected to have fiber because we'll need that for emergency operations center. So, I would say fiber doesn't necessarily get in our way, but then we'll need a little lead time for fiber in the Dickinson Community Center. However, that, those are just two options. I know that there was also some thought about maybe rotating that. So, staff looked at that as well. The issue with that, obviously, is we have equipment that needs to be moved from location to location. Plus, it's not just the council meetings, it's other boards as well, so we had that issue to consider. And then we also look at private sites. The private sites bring other complications. So, that's really the inventory and we'll go wherever you tell us to go and just need your direction.
Okay, council. Discussion.
To the mayor?
Yes, please.
To me, it looks like the Fico Williams is a viable option considering the fiber optic is there as opposed to the community center where it's not there as of yet. And to consider the other private options, there's a cost associated with that. And I would like to move forward with going to the Fico Williams because I feel that it's most feasible. Be interested in hearing my colleagues' comments.
What is the expense to do the fiber at the community center? And do we not need that in the future there for future events?
Well, because of the structure's ability to withstand, you know, it's category five, correct? We'll need to do the emergency, we'll need to be prepared for emergency operations center there. So, the expectation was to bring back a fiber project to you. Jerry, the cost of that?
We did initial estimates for overhead fiber when we were looking at the temporary city hall locations. Just overhead fiber was going to come in approximately $30,000. But if we're going to be using the facility as an EOC, we have to go underground and the cost is going to be substantially greater. So, we're looking to work with the state of Florida and AT&amp;T using the MyFlorida Network and we can get fiber probably into that location within a 60 to 90 day period. But there would be a monthly cost associated with that, I would say between $1,000 to $1,500 a month.
And the center, the Fico Williams Center, is it a category five?
My understanding, and I'll defer to Dennis on this one, I don't believe it is. The only good thing is we do have fiber there already for the council meeting, so we'd be able to do the live network broadcast the same way we do right now. But even if it was category five, the fiber there is overhead on the electrical poles, so it wouldn't be feasible to put the EOC there.
Yes, Mr. Burges.
Are there grants or assistance programs, since we have to have it underground, that come from anybody?
We're looking into that right now.
Thank you.
To the mayor?
Yes, please.
Right now, when are we planning on moving to the temporary space?
Our target date is the first or second week of February.
I see it's not going to cost us one red copper penny to go over to Fico Williams. Am I correct in that assessment?
When I was looking into all the areas, I checked our community centers and we can hold the committee meetings and we can hold the council meetings at either center if we need to. So, there won't be no problem.
Why would that have to be the cost?
The cost? There wouldn't be no cost for the centers, of our centers.
Right.
Will there be a cost to have the meetings at the senior center?
No, because we'll be using it ourselves. It won't be a cost for us.
Okay, well, perhaps not for the...
There would be a cost to install fiber in the Dickinson Center and there would be no cost in the Fico Williams.
I understand we'll need it either way, but right now...
That's correct.
If we have to go over there, we need that fiber optic in order to show...
We had to move over there tomorrow for the Fico Williams, it wouldn't cost us.
Versus the senior center?
Correct.
It wouldn't cost us?
No, it would cost us.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
It's going to cost them. So, why, I know, understand we have to have it in the long run, but if we had to move tomorrow, next month, it wouldn't cost us a penny to go to the Fico Williams. So, for me, I would say go where it won't cost us a penny.
For the EOC, it's not long run, it's next hurricane, this coming hurricane season, correct?
Correct. And like I said, it would take 60 to 90 days, which give us sufficient time before hurricane season to at least get the fiber into the building. So, we have ample time to go ahead and do that at the community center.
To the mayor?
Yes.
In the interim, if you're really interested in moving to the community center, once that fiber optic is in place, then transition to the community center until the city hall is built.
And that kind of answers, you know, you're the one that brought up the idea of moving if we could, if it wasn't hard.
Right, and then, right, I didn't understand the logistics of going from A to B to C to D.
Mayor?
Let me ask a question. This is a hundred pound of willing. Mr. Williams, you got the floor. Thank you, Mayor. Been quiet all meeting, very quiet. What is the, what's the purpose of going to, I guess, the community center versus the Fico Williams? What's the issue?
If I...
What's the issue?
With regard to the emergency operations center, I mean, the community center has a generator already installed, permanent generator.
I'm not sure that was your question. From a technical perspective, it really makes no difference to us whatsoever, other than we expect to install fiber at the Dickinson Center and we know that the Fico Williams, we can move in right away. We don't take a position one way or the other, which location is better, that really is your decision.
Yeah, well, that's right, but that question's for my colleagues because they're the ones making the decision up here. So, it looks like there's a push for the community center. I'm trying to ask, that bothered me one day earlier.
I think that you just look at the logic of it. I mean, if we move there now because it's ready, the Fico Williams Center, and then we move to the community center, we've actually, to me, balanced out both sides of the community, you know? Yes, Mr. Paul?
I'm confused too.
I'm confused, I don't get it.
So, right now, we really don't have the option of moving to the community center if we still wanted to do live broadcast.
Well, really, it depends on time. To put it in perspective, of all the rate on council we have in this building, this location here was the lowest, amongst the lowest, which was below the recommended action level.
Talking like this room?
This particular room. So, if the choice was move to the Dickinson Center and you didn't want to move there until the fiber was up and running, that you could stay here in the interim until you decide to go there. Or if you went to the Dickinson Center and were okay with not broadcasting live on that particular night, then that would be, that would be fine too, that would work for us. On the other hand, if you wanted to be up and running, move out of here as soon as we move out of the building, Fico Williams gets you on the right immediately.
Well, I, I really want to be out of this building, I don't want to be in this building. And so, for me, I think Fico Williams would work in the beginning. You said 60 to 90 days, Jerry? Mr. Manager, Jerry?
The Dickinson Center.
For the Dickinson? So, we have to have it done by hurricane season anyway, so I wouldn't be opposed to going to Fico Williams for a few months, but then we need to have a home for the remainder of the month. And I think the community center, because it is that people are in and out of there all the time, and I think it's hard for people to remember what night we meet, let alone where we're going to meet. So, it's, to me, that's what I would probably prefer to do.
I kind of think that's what I said earlier, was we'd go there now and then when we get the building ready, that way we can balance out using both sides of the community, you know, fairly balance it out.
We'll go where it needs us to go.
Okay.
Don't ask that question again.
I was going to ask, what was the comment on the radio?
Oh, let me, let me, what's the purpose, let me ask this question, what's the purpose of moving from Fico Williams to going to the community center if you're already there? I don't get it. I don't get it. I really don't, I don't get that. I don't, I'm a pretty smart person. Can I make? I don't get from rotating, if you're at the Fico Williams already, you're saying getting the community center up and going because you're putting fiber optic there for hurricane EOC? I don't get it. Maybe I missed something. Is it the neighborhood? Because I heard, I heard Councilwoman Wallman say people go in and out, people going out to Fico Williams building every day too. I don't get, I maybe I missed something. I don't get it. And I was trying to do it for you.
People go in and out of the community center at nighttime all the time, they have classes there, they have the gym there.
They have that same thing at Fico Williams too.
I don't.
You don't know because you don't go there.
Oh.
They do, but they have it, they have it over there. But I'm just saying, I don't, I don't get, I don't get the transition from Fico Williams to the community center when they both have operational with programs in morning and daytime and nighttime. I don't, I don't understand why we're transitioning. If you're going to Fico Williams, why do we have to in midstream go to the community center? Maybe I'm just lost.
Here's why I brought the point up, because originally when we talked, Vice Mayor has mentioned us, mentioned that we move around Homestead to a couple different places to accommodate the entire city. So, I was really just trying to be accommodating and saying, okay, we'll go here for a while and then we'll go here for a while.
Oh, but it doesn't, it doesn't appear that way though. It depends upon some of the comments that are being made. It doesn't appear, but it doesn't, it doesn't appear that way.
That's my attempt.
But it doesn't appear that way.
Yes, Mr. Shaw. I'm indifferent on either way, whatever the majority of the council rules, but we seem to be going back and forth, so why don't we do, we anticipate it'll be at least two years, so why don't we do the next year, this year in Fico and next year in the community center? And that way, we've accomplished the goal of spreading the wealth amongst the community.
Let me just say this, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. I was trying to find out, would it be intent on moving if you're already at one location? It confuses persons when you're trying to transition three months here and four months here, while we're going to go from one place to another place if you're already, already set up at one place. I do, I just don't get it, but that happens sometimes. Here.
My best recollection, what's really remembers is it was a little under four, I would say it was in the threes, do you remember?
Oh, boy, I can't remember the exact number, but it was under four, it was under four, it was under the recommended.
It was kind of hugging from what I remember, but unless I pulled a report, I wouldn't certify for that.
The way I see it is here, we're here for a short period of time, whereas we're moving everyone out of here because, you know, the staff that's working here on a daily basis, that's why we're moving out here. But for the meetings, we're here for a couple hours. You know, I guess, we've been doing it for so long already, I'm comfortable with if we would have been, just stayed here. But I guess, you know, there's some colleagues that might feel the need just to, just to be out of here just because, you know, they're on 3.5 and there's a concern. I don't have a concern with the time, but just, I think it would still be easier if we just stayed here for this meeting. I don't know where, maybe I wasn't, I was missing the first time we had spoken about moving it elsewhere, so.
Make a comment?
Yeah.
Well, one problem I see with your analogy is that I believe the RFP that's going to go out this week, when we gave direction, was to include this property. So, this property could be gone long before we have a home to go to, is one thing that I see with that, which would, I mean, obviously, we could stay here until that, if that was the course of action that we took with the RFP, then we could stay here till whenever, you know, that was, that deal was done. And then secondly, just one thing to Mr. Williams's comments, one, one thing that's, and I agree, I mean, I was the one, I thought we'd go all over and reach out to all our constituents. We're elected by them and that was my idea of Fico Williams and wherever. The one thing that I do see is that, is that the building up to the, the senior center is a category five ready building, where we're not sure what we have down at Fico Williams. So, as we look forward and start moving equipment in, at some cost, we need to evaluate and make sure that our equipment is protected safely too, and that's all. I'm fine with going down to Fico Williams and taking Mr. Shelley's idea of going down there for a year and then moving up to the other area for a year. So, I agree with Mr. Shelley. Thank you.
Okay. Did you get that direction?
And don't ask where to go again.
All right, we were very clear on that.
What do we tell Mayor Shaw?
Listen, I don't, that doesn't make a difference to me.
We'll get down there and try it, right? And if it doesn't work out, then we'll have to look for other options.
Go to the category five location.
Why know I'm going in the hurricane? Get a category five owner.
I moved that we go to the community center. I moved that we go to the community center.
He's killing me.
No, I'm not kidding. No, I moved that we go to the William F. Dickinson Center. That's my motion. Vote it up or down. I'll second.
All in favor?
No.
All right. Nays?
May.
Okay, we got two nays and four ayes. Okay, roll call. It was 42. Five to two. Five to two. Okay, Madam Kirk, roll call though. In favor of going to Fico, in favor of going to community center?
Councilwoman Wallman?
Dickinson.
Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shearwall from Cormick?
No.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Verger?
Yes.
Councilman Maldonado?
No.
Mayor Bateman?
Yes.
The motion carries?
Thank you, Madam Kirk.
Okay, that takes that. How we can move on?
This next, next one, discussion of, we're discussing mayor and council staff. Tab 17.
Mayor, to me.
Yes, I, this is the topic we put it on.
Thank you. Okay, first off, I would like to thank Councilman Williams for initially putting this on the table. He was very proactive and recognized that there was a problem festering as far as the functions of the staff in the office of the mayor and council. And we had a very spirited conversation about our position on moving forward with hiring an additional assistant, well, four additional assistants, to work with us, either for or against. And I maintain my position that I am not happy with the way that the ladies in the office are functioning now. I don't think it's effective and I felt that moving forward with one assistant per council person, it would allow for our jobs to be a lot more effective and efficient. Thus, the five to vote in the affirmative. The next day, December 13th, we received some numbers from Mr. Carlos Perez and I trust that those numbers were accurate, that it will cost us $311,000 more say?
Additional.
An additional $311,000 to hire four more assistants, is that correct? Yes or no?
That would be the annual cost, correct? To hire four.
Correct. So, I attempted for a couple of days to digest those numbers, but there lies the problem, I've had a hard time digesting those numbers, it's equivalent to asset reflux, it just won't settle. So, I continue to... You have tongue?
Yes, I do.
I need it. So, I continue to reflect and when I reflected, two people came to mind, Mr. Schumacher, a Homestead resident, and my mother. Mr. Schumacher, because during the budget conference, he requested additional police officers. And we shared with him that we didn't have the money for additional police officers and he asked us if we had the money later on, what we consider, and from my recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, and I can be sometimes, we said we would consider. It reminded me of my mom because she taught me to live within my means and make do with what you have. So, it was very uncomfortable for me to move forward with authorizing a budget amendment for $311,000 annually, when we could potentially be putting more officers on the street. Where are we going to get that money from? And because I was elected to govern responsibly and because my conscience is my moral compass, I cannot move forward with the $311,000 expenditure. So, to that end, I would like to reconsider that vote, moving forward for additional staff members and if approved, I have recommendations. So, with that, I would like to toss it to my colleagues to share your comments and our concerns.
Okay, the floor is open. Actually, she made a motion, so let's get a second if there is one to get on the floor. Thank you.
And the motion is to reconsider the fire.
Am I allowed, since I was a neighbor?
Yes, only, there's only, yes.
That's right, you were a neighbor. He was a neighbor, so we gave her a second.
Just to reconsider the vote, either way.
So, five seconds?
Okay, discussion.
Me.
Yes, ma'am.
I too vote the same way, when I got those figures and, and when I asked for clarification, it was to know that we were just waiting for the figures and then to see, so I feel the same way. I mean, I just can't approve it, so.
Yes, Mr. Shaw.
My position's the same as it was before, it stands. I don't, I don't support.
Mayor?
Yes?
I would, I would consider, you know, maybe a change where, I understand that maybe there's some, some council members that don't feel like they'll, they'll need someone full-time. And, but I've always been to the, to the point to, let's make sure we have enough for what we do. We were, we have how many right now? Three? Add plus a ten. Would you guys consider a five instead of a seven? We do need to help, I mean, we can't say that, I can understand we're, live within your means, but I want to make sure that we're being efficient in what we do and getting to our, the people who we present. So, I would consider it, it doesn't have to be each, you know, each one have one, but I would definitely, would like to see if not a fifth, you know, a fifth. It doesn't have to be seven. You know, what's the difference in cost there? We could discuss that. But, you know, the, you know, the managers was, is all, every area here in the city, I mean, they, everyone is staffed up, everyone has the people they need to be efficient. So, you know, I tend to be way more busy than I've been, you know, due to my circumstances and I just want to make sure that I have the staff in order to do it. So, if you guys want to consider a less, a lesser number than what we have, one more than what we have, uh-
Another chance.
That's what I would, I would recommend, one more than what we have.
Mr. Mayor, just procedurally, if we could just, um, if there's, if you can have a, if there's a vote on the motion for reconsideration, then it comes back to the table, and it's as if you had never voted, it's, then you're free to discuss kind of things that Councilman Maldonado has suggested, but first, there needs to be a, a vote on the motion for reconsideration. We have a motion, and we have a second, and no discussion? You have a motion and a second, it actually is debatable, what you've been doing. So, you want to have discussion of whether it should be reconsidered, that's appropriate, and then you need to take a vote on that, and then, once it's reconsidered, then it's, it's as if it had never been discussed, so you can start from scratch and talk about all three.
So at this point, we need to vote because there was a motion in the second. So we, can we call the, uh-
Mr. Mayor, just, and can you just explain, so we understand what we're voting on, what the effect of a yes vote versus a no vote is on this motion reconsider?
The effect of a yes vote is to, um, to negate the prior vote that was taken, and puts, and basically eliminates the prior action that you took, and puts us back on the table as if you had never had a vote on it. That's what it does. Sort of rewinds the clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Madam Kirk, will you please roll the roll?
Councilman Shelley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seacole from McCormick?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
No.
Councilman Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wallman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Burgess?
Yes.
Mayor Bateman?
No.
The motion carries?
Thank you, Madam Kirk.
Okay, so just procedurally, you're back as if this matter had never been discussed, you have a clean slate, and you can discuss whatever-
Yes. May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now that the vote has been reconsidered, I don't think we should move back to the status quo, there's a problem and it still needs to be addressed. So I would like to recommend the following, that we consider at least hiring someone part-time, and then let us know the costs associated with that, Mr. City Manager, and bring that information back to us. In addition to that, a framework should be put in place to clearly delineate which staff member would work with the mayor, and which staff members will work with the council members. Once that has been identified, another procedural framework in place in the event that the staff person who's assigned to work with me on an event, she doesn't have to, or he, doesn't have to pull the other assistants from working with their respective council persons and drop what they're doing to accommodate me and my event, because their work goes on, their show doesn't stop because I'm having an event.
Thank you.
So a framework should be in place, or a contingency plan should be in place, to ensure that their work or my work continues in lieu of their event. Anyone else?
Well, never, do I rarely ever give kudos to the Miami Herald, rarely, because they never give many kudos to me, but I have to give them kudos because they did their homework. And they went and they shopped cities throughout Dade County, and what they came back with was some cities had one staff person for council, some had a staff person for every council person, whether it be five or seven, but there was one thing that every city had, and that was the mayor had his own individual staff person. Every city that they looked at, the mayor had their own staff person. I can tell you just today, I've asked Lourdes to start writing down, every time someone comes in and knocks on that door, knocks on that little window up there, today, seven bodies alone, not the phone calls, not the work she was doing, not what was going on, bodies came in to see me, uh, to ask, Mayor, uh, so-and-so did this, Mayor, I need this answer, Mayor, it's just the way it goes. So I'm asked to, heard it, to keep a log, and we're gonna present, we'll, we'll more than happily present that log to show you how busy one person stays just for that word "mayor," regardless of who it is, Judy, me, that title is unbelievably used. There are two, there are two, there are two titles that are used more than any other titles in a city. They're either yelling for the police chief, or they're yelling for the mayor, one of the two. They're either praising us, or they're, they're knocking us over the head with something, one of the two. It's just two names that come to quickly to mind, I'm calling the chief, or I'm calling the mayor. Simple as that. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, sure.
One thing that concerned me, Mayor, and you, and you brought this up at our last discussion on this, was you said that Lourdes had to stop doing what she was doing to go over and help do purchasing or whatever. We need to make sure that everybody, and I understand that, that, when we go and draw up this new thing, we need to make sure everybody can do the job that they're, that, that is back there, and that they're trained, or that they have been overseen and know how to do whatever it is, is required of them. One person should not have to leave their position to go and cover everybody else's job, we got to make sure that everybody back there can do the entire job, because Lourdes may be sick, and, and, and if she's not there to do the purchases or whatever, what are we gonna do, just stop at that point? So we need to make sure, I don't know if it's through HR with a training, or through some, some classes, but if they cannot do it and can't handle the jobs that they're tasked with, then we need to look from within also, and that's my point. And you were the one that brought that up last meeting.
Sure, you're right.
So, and, and that concerned me, that, that we had people back there that weren't able to do the things that were, that are on their task list.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
This question is for my colleague that, um, has, um, come up with the suggestion, and I know that you referenced the police department, now that you're asking us, that you have recanted on your vote, or have had a change of, uh, direction, but you're still asking us to spend money.
It's not gonna be three hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
But we're still asking them to spend money.
Well, the city manager, if you can bring forth a recommendation-
Right, but, but you're still asking us to spend money, right? At the end of the day.
It depends on, on how much he comes back with. I, Councilman?
Right, but no, we hear, we hear what I'm saying, you're still asking us to-
Let me just clarify my position.
Okay.
I am not comfortable with three hundred and eleven-
No, I'm not asking, I know, we, we got that.
Councilman, may I finish?
No, go ahead.
My statement?
Yeah.
I'm not comfortable with three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Now, I'm trying to, my goal is to ensure that everyone up here has enough support to do their work.
That's fine.
And it's not going to cost probably a fraction, a penny, it may not even cost anything, to bring over another assistant-
Transfer a lot.
To ensure that our office runs functional.
Right.
It may not even cost us dying. That's why I'm asking the city manager to bring back a framework. Hopefully, it doesn't cost a penny to transfer someone into the department to ensure that all of us, and more particular you, so that you can run in function in the manner that you would like to function.
Right.
That is my goal.
Right.
I'm not doing it to the tune of three hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Right, but-
I support the mayor, the office of the mayor having an assistant, and if one person is transferred to this office, it can work.
Okay.
Oh, one more thing, to include the committees. If someone is working with the mayor, they have his committees, if they're working with me, they have my committees. So my direction to you is to provide us a recommendation on how we can move forward, hopefully it doesn't cost a penny to just transfer somebody over. That's the goal. I have nothing further.
But I thought, in, in my questioning to you, uh, I, I heard that you said to hire a part-time.
Well, transfer someone else.
Okay, you said transfer, though, that's why I, that's, yeah, that's why I was, that's why I was getting clarity, because I did hear you say to hire a part-time person, so that's what, that's what-
I stand corrected to transfer someone to the office of the mayor and council, I think I've been clear and concise in my position, I have nothing further.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, so that I'm clear. You did, yeah. Thank you so much, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Shelley.
Mr. Mayor.
Your turn.
Um, so I guess the direction at this point, we're gonna have an, an additional status or, or research done, and a different report come back, and we'll make a decision at that time. To add to that, I guess, homework assignment, um, one of the things also maybe we'll look into is, is putting together a, maybe an internship program with our local colleges here, and use that as staff, essentially, you would have free labor, they would come in, they'd get an education, they would learn how the process works, they would be able to help the assistants that we currently have, to take some of the load off of their backs, um, and see if maybe that's something that might be functional through Miami College or, or the other colleges that are nearby, as a, as a low-cost solution, uh, to some of the problems that we're having as far as getting our assistants, and it gets rid of the busy work from the assistants so they can focus on more of the meat potatoes types of things as well. So just another idea to throw out there.
Uh, thank you, sir.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Manager, could you transfer maybe three more other people? I mean-
You said you could do anything.
You the manager. Could you move three more other people over to the council office? No, I'm saying serious, y'all laughing.
All right, serious.
We're willing to look at any, um, suggestions that you give us. It's just a function of, if you move somebody from another department, obviously, you're eliminating somebody that they rely on for whatever work they're doing.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay. John?
Um-
Go ahead, Mr.-